All right. Called to order this annual meeting of the Stoughton Area School District. I'd like to introduce my fellow board members. My name is Jill Patterson. Lisa Pugh, we be recognized. Allison Sorg. Sharon Milin Bartlett. Mia Croyle. Dawn Garcia. Tim Bubon. Zach Massa Myers. And Jim Moller. Very good. Okay. I'd like to introduce Dan Kizer, the director, or the district administrator, and Erica Pickett, our Director of Business Services. It's amazing, nobody wants to come to these meetings. So now Dan's going to give an overview.
Thank you, Jill. Before, before we go and elect a chairperson for our annual meeting, wanted to give a brief overview of our district, starting with our goals and mission. As you, as many of you in the room are well aware, our goals and mission are around creating the conditions today for every student to thrive academically, socially, emotionally, for unlimited opportunities. We want to ensure that we have educational opportunities that challenge all students to achieve excellence. We want to maximize their talents and abilities and prepare them for what faces them in the future and be a contributing member of society. Our equity vision is our compassionate school community will operate within proactive systems of support to promote a positive, inclusive culture with equity, respect, dignity, so that we can thrive emotionally, socially, and academically. We are in our second or third year of our district goals. Our literacy and mathematics goals are around increasing the proficiency of students in these areas across the board, while at the same time reducing by 50% the opportunity gap for our populations based on race, ethnicity, students with disabilities, and students who are English language learners. We also have a third goal that underpins these academic goals for belonging, which is something that no other district that I have found in the state of Wisconsin has codified to this degree, where we are trying to define a sense of belonging and then also go to measure that, because we know and believe strongly that if students feel as if they belong in the environment, they will also thrive socially, emotionally, and academically. Our budget objectives for this year are no different than the budget objectives that we've had in previous years. We want to make sure that we continuously improve student achievement while forecasting and balancing future budgets. We want to continue to improve our programs and educational initiatives and provide transparency around our district finances, which you'll hear a little bit later tonight. We want to look for ways to improve efficiencies while providing quality services and continue to meet all, meet our new and ongoing state budget and federal, state and federal requirements around all of the various areas such as school safety, achievement, wellbeing, and child nutrition. We continue to manage our resources responsibly and create and maintain trust while also reducing, we strive to reduce budget expenses whenever possible, helping to minimize future deficits. Attract and retain high-quality employees in a competitive market and create a staffing plan according to class-sized targets, which balances both academic options and support services while also remain financially sustainable. The strategies that we employ to achieve those objectives are to align our resources to achieve our district goals, as outlined on the previous slide. Align our budgets to support our district strategic plan and, and district goals, and align our resources to support the district equity vision statement and corresponding work. Educating stakeholders around the impacted revenue limits and declining enrollment continues to be an ongoing strategy for us. So before jumping into our election of a chairperson, we wanted to share our points of pride. Here are some slides showing our award-winning staff and students and outlining our goals around respect, responsibility, resources, engagement, and teaching and learning. Wouldn't that be a good overview if we didn't highlight the several months of construction that we are wrapping up? You can see here several of our buildings. Here are our elementary schools and our maintenance building. And then our high school. And then our addition onto our River Bluff Middle School. We want to thank all of our partners, EUA and Findorf and the subcontractors, as well as our several maintenance and custodial staff, and all of our teachers, administrators, assistants, EAs, and other support staff that have helped make all of this work while we were writing an entire school district. So it's no small task. And here was a ribbon cutting showing some of our partners and some of our district staff. So, all right. So I now open the floor for chairperson for the annual meeting. Do I have any nominations? Is there a second? All right. Are there any other nominations for chairperson for the annual meeting? Last time, are there any nominations for chairperson for the annual meeting? I will close nominations. All in favor of electing Jill Patterson as chairperson for the annual meeting, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? All right, Jill, the floor is yours.
I'd like to introduce Erica Pickett.
Good evening. We're going to talk about the 25-26 budget tonight. Before we start with that, we're going to do a quick overview of last year's ending balances as of June 30th for all of our different funds here in the district. This is a, an overview of our revenue, expenses, and cash balances as of that point in time. Budgeting is a multi-year process, and we go into every budget year with some known data, as well as making a lot of assumptions to create that budget. A lot of those assumptions are based off of our history, which we've got here in front of you. Our main operating funds are our general fund, which is Fund 10, and our special education fund, which is Fund 27. And we'll be talking mostly about those two funds tonight, because it is the lion's share, it represents the lion's share of our work here in the district. Every month, we do have detailed financial statements that we compile and post on our website. In addition, our audit will be wrapped up here shortly, which has more information about 24-25 fiscal year, and that will also be posted online when we're finished. Our revenue limit is what really drives the vast majority of our budget. It controls over 80% of the total resources we have here in the district. And these are some of the variables that are included in that, in that particular formula. The revenue limit is a complex formula that determines the maximum revenue that we are allowed to see, receive in the form of general aid or equalization aid and property tax dollars. The state revenue limit is calculated by taking a three-year student membership average and multiplying that amount by the maximum revenue per member, which we see here on the bottom of our slide. Historically, the revenue per student was increased by the Consumer Price Index, which was an average of approximately 2.5% for our district between the years of 1993, when revenue limits were created through the 2008-09 school year. Under the 2009-2011 Budget Act by the state, that inflationary per pupil adjustment was eliminated. In six of the 11 years between 2012 and 2023, Wisconsin school districts received no increase per student in that amount. The current state budget does provide an increase of $325 per pupil in our revenue limit. The operational referendum that we passed in April 2024 was a recurring referendum, so last year's $4.3 million increase is represented in that starting amount in that per pupil, that per pupil dollar value. We are very grateful for the support of our community in the passage of that referendum. Ongoing enrollment declines are a significant budget concern for any school district, because our total resources are tied to our enrollment, and we have been declining in enrollment here in our district for over 20 years now. The equalized valuation represents the total value of taxable property located here in our school district. Our total tax levy is divided by this number to calculate our mill rate. Our district is experiencing a property value increase of about 7.8% this year. As I mentioned before, we have been declining in enrollment, and that has continued this year. Our September membership is down 49 students compared to last year. This graph, graph represents our September membership that is used in a revenue limit worksheet in that three-year rolling average. Again, we've had a trend of declining enrollment since the 2002-03 school year. At that point in time, we peaked at 3,660 FTE. This year, our third Friday membership was 2,719. In 2008-09, we added four-year-old kindergarten, so our numbers this year have an additional grade level compared to when we peaked in, in the early 2000s. Again, this number is included in our revenue limit along with some FTE from our summer school programming. The maximum allowable revenue limit of $40.8 million is calculated by taking that maximum revenue per student of $14,270 and multiplying it by that three-year rolling average I mentioned. The formula also adds in various non-recurring and recurring exemptions, which does include a one-year declining enrollment exemption for us. This year, that voter-approved referendum in April, from April of 2024 includes an additional $600,000 as a recurring amount that is also included in our revenue limit this year. To determine the maximum allowable property tax levy that falls within those revenue caps, we take that total and we subtract out the general state aid of $12.1 million. We then subtract state aid for computers and personal property, which is about $370,000. Then we add in additional referendum-approved debt service levies, community service, and prior-year chargebacks to determine what our final total tax levy will be. This year for our district, the total final levy that's allowed is $31,717,901. It's exciting stuff. Here you can see our revenue limit history over the last 10 years or so. Our total revenue limit increased this year about $1.46 million compared to last year. $600,000 of that amount is the additional step up from the referendum that was approved in April of 2024. In addition, we had that increase by the state of $325 per student. That additional $325 per student that we're receiving this year and next year will mark 18 consecutive years that the state caps on per pupil general revenues have trailed behind inflation. This reality is why over 80% of Wisconsin school districts are relying on operational referendum to provide additional resources since revenue limits were first enacted back in 1993. Our district's equalized value has increased about 287 million or 7.8% from last year. This increase is a combination of new construction as well as inflationary increases on existing properties. The equalized value is a state-determined amount that includes all taxable properties within our district, so all of our municipalities. The total district levy is divided by this amount to determine our mill rate. Our state equalization aid or general aid, those terms are kind of used interchangeably, is decreasing by $1.9 million this year, which is approximately 13.6% compared to the 2024-25 school year. We are one of 301 or 71% of Wisconsin school districts that are seeing a decrease in their aid allocation this year. The state did not provide an increase in the total amount of equalization aid available to districts in the current biennium budget. The last time that the state didn't provide an increase in equalization aid was in the 2017-2018 school year. The only time there was a two-year period with flat or decreasing aid was in the 2009-2011 state biennium, when the state was trying to balance a deficit budget. Without any increase in equalization aid, the allowable $325 per student revenue limit increase is generally supported through the local property tax levy. The distribution of state equalization aid is calculated and, and allocated using a complex statewide formula. How much any one district receives is determined on the district's wealth, and a district's wealth is measured by its property value per student. So the goal is to provide equal opportunities for all children across the state regardless of a community's wealth. So for districts that are wealthier, a larger portion of their total resources come from state aid allocation. For districts that are considered more wealthy, they have to pay for that portion through tax dollars. So again, districts that are determined to be poor are receiving a lion's share of our state aid allocation throughout the state. Our property value per student is above the state average, and because of this, we are considered a wealthier district in that aid formula, which has resulted in a decreasing allocation over time. So about 10 years ago, during the period of time that the state froze the amounts districts were receiving per student in the revenue limit, and they were also limiting increases to general state aid, it created a new categorical aid called the per pupil aid. In some years, the state has chosen to put additional support to schools into this form of aid instead of the way that, instead of the way that they have historically done it, which is an increase in how much you receive in the revenue limit and then an increase in that general aid pool. In doing the per pupil aid, everyone receives the same amount per student. In doing it with the revenue limit and an equalization aid, as I said earlier, some districts receive a larger portion of that through aid, some district had to pay more in property taxes. So by doing this, everyone just got the same amount. That said, we are experiencing an, an amount of $742 per student for the seventh year in a row, because this aid has not gone up in quite some time. So in the current budget year in 25-26, this particular aid amounts to about $2 million for our district. So this is a summary of our total operational revenues by source. Our local sources, again, include our tax levy as well as mobile home taxes, interest earnings, things like student fees and facility rentals. Inter-district sources is the tuition that we receive for non-resident students attending our district through open enrollment. State sources include both the general and pupil aid that I talked about, as well as other aids like transportation, library, special education, and computer aids. Our federal sources include grants like our title and flow-through grants, as well as some resources for things like Medicaid reimbursement. This is the same information just shown graphically. Again, this slide demonstrates that the revenue sources controlled by that revenue limit formula are state equalization aid and tax levy. It's about 82.1% of our total, our total sources of revenue here for the district for operational purposes. And then this just kind of shows you that shifting of sources over time. As you can see, we have a higher reliance on our tax levy compared to our general state aid. You can also see about three years in there where we had an influx of federal resources during the pandemic. And just for some perspective, I look back to the 2006-07 school year. Our state aid that year was 55.3%, and our tax levy was 32.2. So you can definitely see that shift over time. In looking, so once we kind of finalize our revenue limit, because that really dictates how much we're going to have to work with, we focus on the expense side of the budget. There's a lot of ways that we can look at our expenses. This one is looking at our totals by object, which is, you know, what, what are we buying? What goods and services are we spending our money on? Our salaries and benefits equal the majority of our budget. Our purchased services includes things like payments for consulting, legal fees, substitute staff, utilities, audit fees, and tuition payments to other districts for our residents that are leaving our district to attend other schools through open enrollment. Our non-capital objects include supplies, software, and other classroom materials. Capital objects represent a variety of equipment-type items. Debt retirement includes lease payments, it's non-referendum debt-type items. Insurances are things like our property, liability, workers' comp, and unemployment insurance. Object 800 is our fund transfer from Fund 10 to 27 to cover our special education revenue shortfall, and other objects are things like dues and fees. And again, the same kind of information just shown on a chart. And again, like all, most school districts, the vast majority of our budget supports our staffing costs, so just under 76% of our total operational budget is allocated to our people. And then this, this view of our expenses is really at the top of the mountain, but just looking at the difference in function. So what are we purchasing things for? Here you'll see that we have our instructional functions, so anything that falls with the first number being a one is instructional. That's everything from licensed teachers to educational assistance, as well as our supplies and materials for our classrooms. Support services includes a whole slew of items, things like library, counseling, health, occupational and physical therapy, psychology, social work, speech and language, administration, transportation, and our custodial maintenance services. So anything that's kind of not directly in a classroom tends to fall into this category. The non-program function includes that open enrollment tuition that I mentioned earlier, and the transfer from Fund 10 to Fund 27 to cover the cost of special education that is not supported through our special ed aid or our federal grants. And again, just showing that breakdown in a graphical way. Another big chunk of our tax levy is our debt service levy. Our district currently has $43,970,000 in outstanding debt, which will be paid off in the year 2043. These debt payments are a separate tax levy, as they are referendum-approved levies and don't come out of our operational budget. All of our current debt is associated with the November 2022 referendum for capital maintenance and facility upgrades that Dan mentioned earlier. And here you can see our total tax levy and mill rate by fund. Our Stoughton Area School District proposed tax levy is increasing by 10.7% or approximately $3 million compared to last year, and the mill rate is increasing by 21 cents or about 2.7%. And here you can see our tax levy history. Our reduction in state aid is a large reason for the significant increase in tax levy this year. Without a state increase to offset that $325 per student increase in the revenue limit, the vast majority of Wisconsin districts are experiencing a reduction in their aid allocation. This year, our mill rate is increasing by 2.7%. The mill rate is a product of two things, our total tax levy and the equalized property value. The mill rate is the result of dividing the total levy by our total property value. For the mill rate to increase, the total levy needs to increase at a higher percentage than the property value increases. If the property value increases at a higher percentage than the levy, then the mill rate will actually decrease. So what does that mean in December? This example shows the estimated tax impact of the 2025-26 proposed tax levy. The example demonstrates an average home valued at $300,000 last year and assumes that that home increases by 7.8% for this year, which is consistent with the equalized valuation increase that we experienced as, as a district as a whole. In this scenario, taxes are expected to increase about $249 over the prior year. And I just want to say that this is an estimate. The actual impact will vary between different properties and different municipalities. The total taxes seen on an individual's prop, an individual property owner's bill may also be affected by levy credits. So at this point, we are able to entertain any questions on the budget. If you have a question, please step to the microphone, state your name and address prior to asking your question. Alrighty then, I will hand it back over to Jill. Do you want me to do this part? Actually, can you? Thank you. That way I can make a motion.
Okay, so do I read this part, or does somebody have to make the motion? Okay. All right, so who would like to make a motion to adopt the tax levy?
We resolve that there is a levy to patch in the amount of $31,717,901 upon all taxable property located in the county of East Stoughton, in the townships of Eldian, Christiana, Pettigall, Derryville, Duncker, Dunn, Pleasant Springs, and Rockland, in the county of Dane, and in the townships of Porter and Union, in the county of Rock, state of Wisconsin, for the 2025-26.
Is there a second? Second? I don't have to keep track of who's seconding. All right, on favor? Any opposed? All right. Motion carries. There is a second motion. The back one?
That starts with $1,500, like $7,000, $300, or $3,200. Or $3,200, and other numbers, and $2,100.
Okay, is there a second? All right, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Abstentions? Very good. I note that all board members are abstaining. Okay. What are you looking at me for? Okay. Next is... Okay. All in favor? Any opposed? And abstentions? Board members are abstaining. Okay. The next one? Is there a second? Oh. Okay. All in favor? Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay. There we go.
Alright, everybody got mics on? Mia? Mike? Good, alright. Call to order this meeting of the Stotan area school district board of education. Jeremiah Todd the role.
Mr. Tim Buban?
Here.
Ms. Mia Croyle?
Here.
Mr. Jim Moser?
Here.
Ms. Dawn Garcia?
Here.
Mr. Zach Massa Myers?
Here.
Ms. Lisa Pugh?
Here.
Ms. Allison Sorg?
Here.
Dr. Sharon Mylan Bartlett?
Here.
Student rep Michaela Becker?
Here.
And president Joe Patterson?
Here.
Okay, next item on the agenda is public comment. Fun public comment in person, very good.
Hello, I'm Jeremy Donohue, eleven hundred Peterson Drive, Stotan, Wisconsin. I am a parent, educator, and coach in this district, and I would like to bring up my concerns over the strength and conditioning program. Before I go any further, I would like to make it extremely clear my concerns have nothing to do with our high school strength staff. They have been tremendous for our students. However, I do have concerns over the offerings to our middle school students. Fifteen years ago, Stotan was a Wisconsin leader in terms of strength and conditioning. We were one of the first to hire a full-time strength and conditioning coach in a weight room very few high schools could even imagine. That progressed into our middle school offering students the choice between a strength and conditioning or the team activity-based PE class. We were seeing great results in physical development and the health in our students as they moved on to high school, and our families were extremely happy with the opportunities provided. Fast forward to today, and we no longer offer strength and conditioning at the middle school, and we haven't for five years. Our high school strength coaches are forced to have a supervision hour instead of being in the weight room and offering even more strength classes for our students. This prevents many students from being able to take their classes, including all freshmen. We have gone from being one of the leaders to falling behind quickly. The average cost for families per student is about two hundred dollars a month to receive multiple training sessions a week outside of our school. This is simply not a realistic option many families in our district can afford. Oops, lost my spot. Instead, these should be a service we offer to every one of our students in grades six through twelve for free. It's been done here before, and it should be done here again. Over the past few years, I've reached out to some administration voicing these concerns, some engaging in conversations and some not responding. Either way, we are five years removed from these opportunities without a solution. So I come to you to help find a solution to this problem. A short-term solution has been offered to our eighth graders. Our high school strength coaches have opened their weight room after school three times a week for them to train there. However, the district is refusing to let our athletes ride a mostly empty bus from the middle school to the high school to train with our higher professionals in another district building without changing its route. Instead, parents are forced to follow these mostly empty buses with student-filled cars who want to train with our staff. Surely, we could find a way to get these students bus passes so they can receive the service they should be getting here during the day. I've been trained by this district to always ask the question, what is best for students? When trying to solve a problem, this solution seems like an easy way for us to provide what's best for our students. The long-term solution currently sits unused and dysfunctional at River Bluff. When the referendum was passed, a new weight room was promised at River Bluff. However, that space right now sits unused and filled with dilapidated equipment that does not fit the function of the space and only, as of recently, have discussions even started about how to use it. If we want to do what's best for children, we need to consult our high school strength coaches and current River Bluff PE staff with how they would like to see it filled and used. Even more importantly, we need to ensure we have someone in that position who has the passion and knowledge to help our students grow healthier and stronger running those classes. Putting these things in place should be a priority and should be accomplished as soon as possible to stop the falling behind our students are experiencing. I'm looking forward to hearing your solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, were there any written public comments? Okay. We are on to item two B, the legislative update.
The legislature, each of the chambers, the assembly and the senate were in session last week for four periods. That sort of action has been kind of slow since passage of the budget. However, there were some educational bills that were passed in those chambers and are now on the governor's desk. One of those is eighty-two, which requires school boards to adopt policies to prohibit use of personal devices. There are some exceptions in personal devices, including use of cellular phones, iPhones. Some of those exceptions are could be for health reasons, IEP, other academic reasons that the educator decides are necessary for using personal devices. That bill passed with overwhelming bipartisan support in the senate, twenty-eight to four. Most Democrats were for it, and I believe all Republicans were. There's a sense from the school boards association that this could pressure Governor Evers to sign the bill. It is on his desk now. It requires school boards to adopt by July of next year a policy that generally prohibits pupils from using wireless communication devices during instructional time, except for those exceptions. And I know we already have a policy on the books related to this. So if this passes, we can just assess if it's aligned. In the assembly, there was a bill that we've talked about here before that passed in the assembly regarding requiring that books and other instructional materials could be inspected by members of the public at certain periods of designated times. This bill is expected to be vetoed by the governor. He has vetoed similar legislation in the past. So that's what happened on the floor in terms of things that have moved their way to the governor's desk. There were some committees that met. The Assembly Education Committee approved the passage of two bills. We've talked about those bills here, the ones relating to allowing federally chartered youth organizations to enter the building, also allowing military recruiters to have different types of access, increased access to school buildings. Those again passed out a committee and will be moving to the assembly floor. Believe, I'm not sure where the partisan breakdown is on those bills. Sorry about that. There were public hearings on a couple of education bills. AB four oh five is a bill that requires a school board include particular details, additional details in their human growth and development curriculum. These details are related to the explanation of pregnancy, prenatal development, and childbirth. Again, that was just a hearing that happened on October second. Assembly Bill four fifty-seven also received a hearing. It talks about the conditions under which a school district may adopt a resolution to exceed its revenue limit. We've talked about that proposal in this discussion before. A couple of other committees, non-education committees, are working on hearing, voting on bills that relate to education. In the health, senate health committee, a bill prohibiting school boards from providing food containing certain ingredients in free and reduced-priced meals that passed on partisan vote out of the committee, so three to two. The senate committee on mental health, substance abuse prevention, children and families, passed a bill on party line vote that begin its SB one seven one. Beginning in the twenty twenty-six, twenty-seven school year, the bill requires school boards to provide a sexual, a child sexual abuse prevention instructional program to pupils, four-year-old through grade twelve. I don't know why this passed on party line vote, but I'm guessing it's because it didn't have any funding associated with it, which is a lot of times why bills like that don't go forward. SB ninety-seven, there was a hearing. This is a bill that's already passed the full assembly that requires each school board to notify a pupil's parent or guardian if the school board receives a credible report alleging sexual misconduct and certain requirements for notifying the parent or guardian under certain deadlines. There is a new bill that began being circulated for cosponsorships. That basically means the bill authors looking for friends on the bill that would add to state's current regulations on dual enrollment and as an effort by the authors to seek and promote increased access to dual enrollment for high school students. You might have seen that the Capital Times had published an investigation they did regarding two hundred teachers, Wisconsin teachers, aid substitutes administrators from twenty eighteen to twenty thirteen, twenty twenty-three, who are accused of sexually, sexual misconduct. Their report revealed that state education officials at DPI allowed licensed teachers under investigation to forfeit their credentials in exchange for avoiding in-depth. That investigation has prompted some draft legislation that is being circulated in the legislature. So expect to hear more about that. Also, I saw today Governor Evers, along with the Department of Financial Institutions and DPI are recognizing student FAFSA filing month. So they're encouraging students to look into and apply for the free application for student, federal, federal student aid for the twenty twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. So just a reminder about that. And then finally, last but not least, the government shutdown continues. There doesn't seem to be an end in sight, according to update from the school boards association. There have been these dueling resolutions in the senate which have failed multiple times. I'm not keeping track, as of last Wednesday, it was seven, but I think it's more by now. The house is currently in recess, so our congressional members are not in DC currently. So this is all happening in the senate. You might also have seen the concerning news that President Trump has threatened to fire employees instead of just merely temporarily furloughing them. And that actually has happened across a variety of departments, including at the US Department of Education. The Office of Special Education and Rehabilitation Native Services saw severe reduction in staff, a more, close to five hundred people that were laid off and presumably fired. There is a court challenge to that, but this has never happened before.
Okay. Are there any questions for Lisa? Mia?
I just have one thing to add, which is it doesn't directly impact the school, but it will affect our children. The Dane County is currently going through their budget process, and they are looking at a four percent reduction for all purchase of service for all the organizations and community that provide mental health services, including the ones that do school-based mental health. That we intend to block those.
More good news.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Lisa? Alright, moving on to work group update, which we have had no work groups meet since our last meeting, so that's a zero. And we have, item two D is my favorite part, student representative's report.
I thought I gave you access. I don't, I can try and, but it might work. Okay, so. Yeah, oh, okay. So for some activities, there was the color run at River Bluff, which I'm very jealous of, we never got that, but it looks like a lot of fun. I'm proposing a color run at the high school now. And then there was also the Gillies Grand Prix at Keganza. So that's like a bit of a fundraiser for them. All the elementary schools do one throughout the year. And then at the high school, the FFA team, play, the dairy judging team placed first at the World Dairy Expo out of a hundred and sixteen teams. So that's very incredible for them. I need you to do it, Eric, thank you. And then for some other activities, of course, there was homecoming. And so I've included some pictures. There's the football game, some of the dress-up days. The one in the bottom left corner is from senior citizen kind of day at the high school. And then from the parade. And so it was very cool. We had some of students at the high school do kind of a social media takeover of the We Are Stotan page for the day on Friday. Oh, okay. I had a video that, I can try and send it out to the board, but it was made by two high school students, I mean, college students at UW- Whitewater. And they, it's the first time we ever did it. They edited together clips throughout the week of the dress-up days and then the pep assembly and parade and tailgate. So I can try and get that to work. And then for athletics, girls swim, be it Sauk Prairie, in a duel on October seventh. Boys cross country placed ninth out of seventeen at the Lutheran Viking Invitational on October ninth. And Elijah Judd placed fourth out of a hundred and thirty-three runners. And then Meadow Sewicki placed twenty-eighth at the Division One Girls Golf Sectionals on October seventh. And Elijah Judd is the cross-country conference champion, which is, they said on the announcements this morning, one of four in school history. And then the whole boys team took second place, so. And then for arts, marching band attended an invite last weekend at Sauk Prairie, and they placed second there. And then on Saturday, they went to state at Whitewater along with forty other bands. Choir had their fall concert on October thirteenth. And then tickets for the music, Fall Musical Chicago are on sale now, and those performances will be, I believe, November eighth, ninth, and tenth. And that's all I have.
Questions for Michaela? Seeing none. Love to get the video if you can.
Yeah, I, I downloaded it, so I'll try it. I wonder if it's just the access. Yeah, I wonder if that'll work.
The FFA thing is pretty incredible.
Yeah.
If any, for people who didn't grow up on a dairy farm, judging dairy cows is a very specific skill.
Yeah, I was, yeah, it was really cool. And I know that the four girls who are on that team, I know that they've won some other things, I think, last year too. So it's very cool.
Well, oh.
I wonder if you're, it's muted. It's awesome.
It's awesome.
Hard to follow that. We are now on to item three, the consent agenda. Move approval of the consent agenda is presented.
Second.
Seconded by Bubbaan. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, when you said that's hard to follow that, based on one of the things Michaela told us about with the FFA getting first place at the World Dairy Expo, that they are asking on this agenda of overnight trip proposal to go to Scotland and be able to judge because they want, it's just, it's pretty cool. It's a neat opportunity.
Any other questions or comments? I guess that was comment. All right, so then, all in favor?
Hi.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Consent agenda is approved. We are on to item four.
All right. So. Building off of the board development at 5 o'clock, where the board members had an opportunity to hear from each of the schools around their goals and the strategies that they are implementing in the first 100 days and for some across the entire school year to achieve their outcomes. We now have the opportunity to hear from Kate, who will present an aggregate of the interim goals for literacy and math for the first time this year, but we will also be looking historically at our trends. So I'll turn it over to Kate now that she's here. Kate, just turn on your mic, and I will turn it over to you.
Hi, everyone, again. Tonight, we'll talk a little about our interim indicators for our students' academic success in the areas of reading and math. So I know you have had an opportunity to review the data that we just gathered last month, and also to take a look at how that is juxtaposed with last year's data and even the year before that in this view. One of the major takeaways as we look at the data or updates is that, first of all, you'll see that score rise precipitously for the early literacy composite. And I did make a note there that it's not valid for comparability from last year because we have changed the tests that students have taken, and by "we," I mean the state. These are, these early literacy indicators are those screeners that the state has instituted for all kindergarteners and first graders, so we are using those. And also because Ames Web, which is the vendor that the state uses, has changed their cut scores, so I did want to make that note to you. You see that really nice rise, and our students did do well, and they did improve. However, it's not useful for comparability. But I just wanted to let you know that from here on out, we'll be using, we'll continue to use the new Ames Web cut scores, as you can see here, depicted in fall of 2025. So there'll be comparability from our fall scores moving forward. And the second thing that I wanted to draw everyone's attention to, and probably you've noticed, is that we have seen increases in all our students in terms of their reading success as we look at the screening indicator, which is, for our district, a reading. And we have also seen increases for most of the subgroups. We have seen increases in all of our students also for math, and mostly increases for our students, but also we've noticed a couple of scores staying neutral, and one or two of them taking a backslide just by a percentage point or two. Wanting to also draw everyone's attention that when, particularly when we take a look at the subskills or the subgroups, pardon me, for our students, that those represent much smaller numbers than the all-students number. So we are, we're really looking at different group sizes, but we think it's really important to take a look at how our student, how all of our students are doing, and also students from typically or historically marginalized groups are doing. I know that's been a major priority for the board and for us as staff. So we wanted to make sure that that's included here as well. Most of the reasons behind what you see are probably evidenced by some of the discussions you had earlier this evening with our principals and school representatives. So you saw, or you heard or listened to, or perhaps even saw described, a trends that include closer looks at how all of our students are doing, not only on these screening indicators, which, once again, we give three times a year, but also at the performance of our students in between the screening indicators with regard to their work in the classrooms every day, and the analysis of student work that's happened, and most importantly, the response to student work. So I think you have also heard a great deal about all of the interventions that we are putting in place for students, and also all of the amplified instructions. So in many instances, the amplified education really has to do with how we are spending our time in core. So we're making sure that what all students get casts a wider net for more students. And I think you also heard attention to the kinds of routines that we're engaging in when we look at student work. So we've gotten tighter about what that, what those routines and what those protocols look like and consist of. We really believe that our most valuable resource is our educators, and bringing our educators together and setting the table really well for them to be able to have the conversations that they most need to have, has been a priority. So trying to, for us to remove the barriers that might stand in the way of educators having those good conversations about how students are doing has been, has been central and been an area of emphasis for us. But mostly, what you heard about before really revolves around having very clearly identified objectives or action items, and then ways to measure them. I know I mentioned before, just briefly in the large group, that there is attention to us being a learning organization. So an organization that learns from and with our students. And when we learn, we learn best from our students by taking an active, abiding, and very close proximity to them, and understanding how they are, how they are understanding the material that we put in front of them by being close to them, not only in the classroom, but also when we have those moments of reflection with colleagues. So I'm always incredibly inspired and in admiration of our colleagues and in service of the work that they do. And I do believe that these scores do also are points of pride for us as well this year. They show such growth for our students. And lastly, before we take questions, I really want to emphasize, and I know you know this has always been true, how hard our students work every day. And, you know, you even, you see certainly their animation in the last video that we watched, and that's there too. And that is, their exuberance keeps us going. So we're very appreciative to students and families who have achieved these really great results. And lastly, you know, we're also attuned, always attuned, to doing better. You know, each one of us comes to work every day believing that we make a difference. We believe that teaching causes learning. So while we're really eager, and again, we are, we're inspired by the results we've been able to achieve, we don't rest there, and that's what I think is so admirable about all of our colleagues.
Thank you, Kate. Questions? No. Lisa?
I mean, amazing, really. I mean, some of the progress in here, I think just fall of 2023, all students proficiency in reading, 47, and now we're at 60. I mean, congratulations to you and your team, and of course, the students, but like, I mean, I agree, but, you know, room for improvement in some of the subgroups, I mean, we would wish those numbers would be greater, but just that jump alone is like, just a testament to such hard work. I'm just, I'm very proud. I would, I just had a couple of questions, like, it looks like when you mentioned, you know, some areas that are a little disappointing would be it with our Hispanic students. Do you have a sense for, like, why and what can happen differently?
I think some of the things you heard tonight, I think, I think are indicative of the directions we want to go in. So you heard us talk, you may have heard in a couple of the rotations, the prologue being talked about. So prologue is a series of lessons that are accompanied by our updated curriculum, which is Arts and Letters. Arts and Letters is very similar to Wit and Wisdom, the previous curriculum, however, also represents a lot of changes. And specifically, I think I've said here before, many of the changes that Arts and Letters, our new curriculum has, are, reflect the changes that our educators have been influential in advocating for. So one of those has been preparation for our students who are learning English in terms of vocabulary, in terms of opportunities to explore the content that they'll be experiencing in language arts, but also, you know, those chances to work on foundational skills. And as we mentioned, for older students, really understanding background knowledge and context that's necessary for those, all of our students, but particularly students as they're reading more complex texts really do need to be able to access. So that happens before the classroom instruction, and I know that was mentioned in several of the circles once again. But when we have that, we sort of might refer to it as front-loading or pre-loading. We have those opportunities, we make really good use of times that we're not necessarily all learning together. So we might be learning in small groups, or even in some cases, in individual situations. But our multilingual educators, our general educators, special educators, related services providers have really wrapped around our students in that way. So we are looking to see some increases in their proficiency. And once again, it's, it's all under the web of really hard work, educators and students. But we noticed that too. We noticed that.
Other questions for Kate? Mia?
I mean, I just, I want to echo what Lisa said in terms of, you know, the phenomenal gains that we've seen.
Yeah.
And, you know, what's concerning to me is I looked at the disparity gaps. You know, and I went ahead and calculated how far off from the general population each of these subgroups are. And while we've seen improvements, it looks as though we're not closing any of those gaps. And in fact, some of the gaps are getting bigger. And so I guess I'm just curious, I, I heard all of the discussion about that, but I wonder, you know, do we have specific interventions that are designed for Black students? Do we have specific intervention? Like, do we have a Black Girls Read Club? Do we have a, you know, there's, there's things that we could maybe be doing that are a little more overtly targeting some of those subgroups? And I'm curious if that's ever been part of the discussion.
There are, you know, very definitely efforts to make sure that we are always, and it's really more, less an effort and more a mission, to ensure that all of our work with students is culturally conscious. We know that students bring their full selves to everything that they do. And so everyone, all of our students are, we are always making efforts to ensure that their full identities are realized in the school environment and celebrated. However, in terms of very specific interventions, especially in terms of social-emotional, there are some of those efforts underway, and even some that are, some of our intervention efforts looking to match up students with organizations even outside of Stoughton. So for example, Black Girl Magic and some other organizations, that there are efforts underway. I can't speak exactly to whose part, the extent to which people are participating, but I know that those conversations have happened very recently with students.
And I guess I was thinking less on the social-emotional side and more on the, you know, the hard work of reading and math. I mean, there are math curriculums that are designed specifically to speak to the cultural heritage of African-Americans. And I don't know if any, if we've ever looked at incorporating any of those types of things. I feel as though with our instruction, although we try to, you know, meet everyone as an individual in the fullness of their self, but also we teach in sort of a colorblind way. And it seems like that's not working for a subset of our students, or not working as well.
Well, we certainly identify gaps that we need to close. And in terms of those specific curricula, to my knowledge, we haven't looked at them. That does not mean that groups of teachers have not looked more in depth, and I have not had conversations with teachers about those particular curricula. But I think always closing gaps is a very, while also seeing aptitude and proficiencies levels for all rise is very central to our teachers and our teams' practice. But I appreciate you mentioning that there may be some specific curricula that bears consideration.
Okay, thank you. Jim?
Just a question, I don't need to know the answer right now, but I'd be interested in the the numbers of students in the groups.
Yes, and.
But the N is related to this, because you mentioned some of them are relatively small, which
Yes.
you know, may mean something or not, but.
I appreciate the question, and yes, as I mentioned, and as you did, some of these N sizes are smaller, and they're much smaller than, for example, the all-students. Much smaller by hundreds and hundreds. So I think it's, I think it is important to mention that. So I think it's, I think it is important to mention that. However, we also think it's important to continue to to keep our eyes on those gaps, and every single one of our students is important to us. But you do bring up a good point, that it's, it's just important to pay attention to the fact that students in in groups with smaller N sizes are, or those groups will see a fluctuation that accounts for more of the variance than when you take a look at larger groups. It is, it is true. But we really try to look at matching needs to students in in a very culturally responsive way that really pays attention to the fullness of of who and what each student brings to interactions in school. We want to see students grow. We want to see our students achieve, and that really means paying attention to all of who they are.
Dan, I think those numbers are something that you could send out to the board as a follow-up, yes?
Yeah.
Okay.
Kate and I will discuss some of these.
Yes, and and one note is that for any group with an N size of, or an N size of smaller than twenty, we don't include them here. And that's the similar practice that you'll see for the report cards from the state, which are coming out in just a couple of weeks.
Did you have questions? Go ahead.
One of the things that I was curious about, when you look at the subgroups, in almost all cases, there's a gain, and then it goes down, and then there's a gain, and it goes down. So it looks like there's quite a, an up and down pattern. And tonight, during the five o'clock meeting, we heard a lot about consistency and like, really having good routines. And I'm hopeful that, like, pairing that and really implementing it over the next year, that if we look at this in a year, like, maybe there will be some payoffs. And maybe we can keep on the upward trend for those subgroups instead of the up and down.
Absolutely. We'd like to see that. And and we know that consistency is so important for our students, for our educators, for all of us who are supporting this, like, most important effort that we have in front of us, to see students have the most choices in their lives that they possibly can. And we do think that means doing well in school, both socially, emotionally, and academically. So consistency is very important. You did hear a lot about that routine. Deliberate practice, so not just any type of practice, but very specific practice. Being early or leading indicators of student learning. We noticed that, too. We continue to. Sometimes we have fluctuations. A couple of years ago, we saw a, you know, a downward trend at mid-year, and we've also seen sort of downward trends curiously in spring and then rebound again in the fall. So it isn't that, you know, we're looking at the system data when we, when we look at this level. Our teachers and teams are primarily looking at their their grade level data, and most of all, their, the students they support. So they are able to address those more specific fluctuations in, you know, much more meaningful and purposeful ways because they're, they're looking at at students in their care whose experience, whose everyday experience they can speak to. But it's really important for us to look at overall health in this setting. I'll also say that about a week ago now, I always try to meet with our, our data and assessment groups. So that's comprised of our interventionists, our school psychs, our principals, and we noticed the same trend. You know, sometimes we do see that downwards, so that it's sort of a trend of non-trend. You know, occasionally, we see some slopes that we can't account for at the district level, but we, in terms of the district view, I should say. Because when you go into perhaps individual grade levels or individual classrooms, we see the reason there. So it's, it's, it's findable, but sometimes not when you look at at broad level data like this.
Other questions? Mia?
I did just have one other question. Do we have a sense of what proportion of the Hispanic students are English language learners? I mean, I know in, we were sort of, I worry that we conflate the two.
Oh, sure, yeah.
And so I don't know.
That's interesting, yes. I think that there is that a way of conflating that that isn't helpful. I, I, we have that information, certainly.
Okay.
But it's not visible here.
Okay, because I mean, I know we have English language learners with other language, other ethnic backgrounds as well, and so
Yes.
but the Hispanic ones.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I appreciate that. So would you like to know those numbers? Is that what you're curious about?
Maybe when we send out the the numbers in these categories, we could have a note about that, a little bit of date.
Yeah, yeah. Sure, I think that
If it's easy, if it's a hard data ask to tease that out, then
We can look at that, and then I'll, we'll kind of, we'll put it out there. And if that is something that is, that's a match for what we're seeking, then we can continue to include it. And once again, of course, if it reaches the number threshold that we want to make sure for reportability. Yeah.
Thank you. Lisa?
Your data here doesn't go back far, but I'm wondering, do you consider our students to have recovered from COVID? Like, are we back to where we were before? Are we better, kind of generally speaking?
Yeah, I mean, I think in terms of recovery, I think that that is, you know, speaking individually, I think there's, they're very different and varying individual experiences of what that really means and looks like, because we know that COVID did not impact everyone the same way. However, I think when we take a look at the overall, you know, academic, like, health of of our students, I, I think it's, it's fair to say that we have realized some real gains since COVID. And I think the most reliable way that we really have to look before and after is probably our school report cards, so that can help tell the story. And as those come out in a couple of weeks, we'll be able to have some more conversations at this level about what those reveal. But I think it's very encouraging. It's very encouraging for our students and and our families as well, when we take a look at what what they've been able to achieve and our staff.
Any other questions? I was just looking at an article that said that there's been a national decline in reading and math.
Yes.
So the fact that we are not seeing that here, I think, could be
And well, yes, I will pass that along to our our students and staff. Thank you.
All right, let us move on then. Thank you, Kate. Here, on to item five, our discussion action items, and I will need some motions.
Move approval of the resolution to, resolution to adopt the tax levy as follows. We resolve that there be levy to tax in the amount of thirty one million, seven hundred and seventeen thousand, nine hundred and one dollars upon all taxable property located in the Stoughton area, School District, and the City of Stoughton, and townships of Albion, Christiana, Dodge Grove, Deerfield, Dunkirk, Dunn, Pleasant Springs, and Rutland in the County of Dane, and then the townships of Porter and Union in the County of Rock, State of Wisconsin, for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six school year.
Second.
Second by Massa Myers. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Item five B.
Move approval to adopt the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six budget as presented.
Second.
Moved by Boobon, seconded by Crowell. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. That takes us to meeting closing. Recap of action items I have that Dan is going to follow up with group sizes, including percent of Hispanic students that are English language learners. And I would also be interested in whether English language learners are counted in any other groups. Any other action items I'm forgetting? On later meetings, we have Board Governance meets on Wednesday at five P M. Our next regular board meeting is November third at six thirty and November seventeenth at six thirty. There are no other items to discuss. I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'll move.
Moved by Massa Myers and seconded by Crowell. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?